All right, six o'clock, so we call our regular meeting for order. We'll go to prayer and say the prayers before we get started. God have a Father, we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day that you've given us to enjoy. We thank you, Lord, for the rain that you sent us earlier today. And we just pray, Lord, to protect everybody from the potential bad weather that's in the area tonight. Dear God, Lord, just protect us all from that. Or we lift up the Walker-inherited family's God that had funerals today for the passing of a loved one that you would just comfort and console them, Lord, as only you can in a situation like that. Dear God, and Lord, just pray for tonight's meeting that you will give us the wisdom and good judgment to make the right decisions for the citizens of Tiff County. And this we pray in the sweet and holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If anyone in the audience would like to come talk to us for five minutes or less about anything. If they want to move, we'll go on to the appointments. And we got some guy named Chad Allen Zander wants to come talk to us tonight for two minutes or less. Two, I don't know if he has any minutes.
Otherwise, it's known as the pack of me.
Any commissioners? Mr. Carter asked me to come and talk to y'all about the homestead relief, tax relief grant. I don't know if that's what I said, but... Basically, Governor Kemp signed this bill into a law. We're gonna have eighteen thousand dollars on the assessed value reduced for all homesteaded property. This is not included rental property. So it's only who's actually got their home set as of April the first of twenty twenty-three. I gave you two sets of bills. One on top is a bill, it was for last year, but it's all the millage rates as, without the eighteen thousand dollar deduction. The second page is the exact same bill with the eighteen thousand dollar reduction manually. We couldn't do it in our computer, so we had to do it manually. Basically, the county will have about around five, five hundred and thirty-some odd dollars. We don't know because the millage rate happened for this year. The second set of bills is the city. They will have a little bit more. I think it's six hundred, about six hundred and fifty to six eighty, depending on their millage rate. So it will be a reduction in the bill. What that also does is the state will reimburse the city, the county, and the school that money that the bill reduced by and send it directly to each infant. They said sixty days after the bills go out and we send it up there. It'll all be done by our digest numbers. So when we send, the earlier we send our digest numbers, the quicker we get our money back. And that's it in a nutshell. Any questions? And I did give you a little facts and our questions and answers, facts and on that in case somebody asks you about it. That right there kind of goes through what most people are gonna ask you about it. They will see a reduction in this year's property tax bill.
And it's just this year?
Yes, as of right now, it's just this year.
Do you want to tell the commissioners that we talked to their constituents or what they should warn them about? Like the escrow?
Escrow account, the, yes, because their, their property tax will be reduced this year. So usually mortgage payments will go down. They'll, they'll reduce their mortgage payment to offset the reduction in the property tax. I would tell them just to keep it the same. Because next year with the reassessment, there's a good possibility it might go up above what was last year's number. So we're average, we're going down this year, next year we'll probably go above average. Deal with the reassessment county-wise.
All right, any questions?
If you got any questions, you can come sit in the office, call me, whatever.
All right, thank you, Chad.
All right, that it? Y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, items to be added to the agenda. The addendum to the contract with Watkins and Associates LLC for the Pocket Park Improvement Project, Notice of Awarded Construction Contract for the Pocket Park Improvement Project, and purchase playground equipment and safe surface for the Pocket Park.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed this with the majority of you. Pocket Park, as you know, we sent that out to bid, the bids are in. And staff had asked that we add four point one and four point two. That's the adjustment to the, to the engineering contract for construction and design of Pocket Park and notice of award. And that, we'll talk about that when we get to it. But the purchase of playground equipment for Pocket Park, we have currently two separate bids on playground equipment. There may be our... There's a fair amount of, I wouldn't say they're apples to apple bids. So we're asking that you not add that, the purchase of four point three yet to the, to the agenda and allow us to, to resubmit a set of playground specs so that we make sure. I mean, the difference in the two we got is about forty thousand dollars. And it's hard to really determine the differences in the two because of the format of those prices and the bits that we're in. We'd like to basically reject those and send those back out to see if we can't get a little more clarity on exactly what we're paying for, what we're getting, and make sure we get that. The biggest bank, most bank for our budget. So we'd ask that you add four point one and four point two, Mr. Chairman, and not add four point three.
All right, do we have a motion to that, Phil?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, add a four point one, four point two, that's added to the regular agenda. All right, the minutes for work session made a second, twenty twenty-three. Executive session made a second, regular session made eight, twenty twenty-three. And workshop made a third at twenty twenty-three. If I had a chance to look those over. So we're looking forward for motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right, thought of hearings. Mr. Chris Davis. Congratulations are called. Public, he actually dragged away this on that.
We have an application submitted by the Tiff County Development Authority that's the owner of the property, Tim Butler, for agent. This property is located forty-seven twenty Union Road. Currently, the property is owned WLI wholesale lot industrial. Mr. Butler has asked along with the Tiff County Development Authority to re-own that property from WLI to AG. It's about forty-four, forty-eight, I think, forty-eight point four-four acres. The camp room backs up to the church garden camp room. Across the road, you have a, to the north of it is more WLI. What his intent is, is to be able to split that property, be able to sell two parcels along Union Road to have houses built on and then keep the remaining balance for his personal use. We had, had a hearing with planning's on board on May the eleventh. There was one person in my audience that spoke against it. Once we explained what was kind of going on, I felt like he was okay with it. He did come into my office later. I think it was actually last week. We sat down for about an hour and a half and discussed it a little bit more. I found the reasons he was there was unfounded, but I'm getting some similar detail about it. Other than that, we haven't had anybody else come in or call. We posted the property running ads in the paper. The planning commission voted to recommend approval, all in favor. I know Mr. Butler's here, if you have any questions for him. If the board has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions for Chris or Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you. All right, do you have a motion to approve? Oh, yeah. Let Mr. Al have his say.
As you all know, we have an application for it. We need to make sure there's no conflict of interest. So we'll, you and I'll make sure there's nobody here that has a personal interest and their business has an interest in the property. Be considered for the, for the decisions. So if anybody has, has any kind of conflict of interest or any interest in the, the record, let nobody spread a public hearing. And we'll allow folks to be for or against. Come forward. Would I speak towards it?
Name, Tim Butler. I'm the, I recognize the name. Any questions? I think Mr. Davis has pretty much explained everything.
Just state your full name and address, please.
Tim Butler, one ninety-two Cocke County, Land Road, Amica, three one double seven five. All right, anything, any questions?
Okay.
Letting y'all fly.
Somebody else to not speak to or against?
Against?
Either way.
Okay.
Yeah. Chris Virchell, three four fifteen, Madison Drive, Incorporated, Tiff County. I'm just gonna, just kind of ask a couple of questions about it. I don't, it's really rare that, that anybody asks the zoning to be changed from a higher intensity to a lower intensity. And I'm, and I don't really understand why that, why that is. And so, you know, and the owner of it is currently the development authority. So I'm wondering like how changing the zoning affects the mission of the development authority. I'm not really quite sure how that is. So if you wanted, like, if they wanted to have it stay agricultural, a simpler thing would be simply put a, like a, an easement on it, like conservation easement? Or if they're trying to make money off it, but why aren't they selling it at the WLI rather than the agricultural?
Okay, I'm also the chairman of the Tiff County Development Authority. I'll try my best to explain it. But it's a piece of property that the development authority inherited somewhere way back when, when none of us were on the development authority, even when our executive director was, before he came and he's been here a long time. So it's just a piece of property they deemed that we would never use for economic development. And so that's why they're just selling it off. And Mr. Butler needed change to be able to do what he wanted to do with it.
Okay, just asking a question.
Okay, and may I ask you what?
Sure.
And it probably received, the zoning that it receives caused the transition of ownership to the development authority.
Right, that's right.
For the purposes of his project, the zoning application to change meets his needs better. Anybody else? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and this is ready for action.
All right, now I ask for a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion to approve and second. So all in favor of approving? TZZA twenty-three dash oh four, raise your hand, please. All right, thank you. All right, six point two TC TA twenty-three dash oh four is on the text. And we're going to hand our regulations to sign. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. As we're talking on our work session, we've had a lot of, of future development and developers and businesses coming into the county along Highway A two that were, you know, having some issues with our sign, our sign ordinance and the requirements for wall signs particularly. Our ordinance is pretty restrictive in line with one wall sign. And a lot of these folks have multiple frontages. They won't be able to advertise their businesses coming in off other roads and off Highway A two. And we just didn't have anything in their mechanism to allow for them. Further, the county manager, I went back and we looked at some other communities our size, not just necessarily surrounding counties and cities, but areas our size that have highways and through their jurisdictions, seeing what their sign ordinances were. They were a little more lenient on the wall signs. So we came up with this recommendation to the board to kind of come in, not compliance, that's not right word, come more into what they're doing and what they allow. So we're all kind of shooting from the same, you know, as far as everybody have the same requirements. Well, our ordinance said with one wall sign per business, we asked, or we recommended to the board that in the CC, which is commercial, general business, WLI, and HI districts, that we change that from one wall sign to four wall signs for a total cumulative of ninety-six square feet of wall signs. Per one of the board members, we actually added some other language in down there at the bottom on the next, they have a sheet. Where we amended in there, it says maximum area wall signs. We put the same thing, ninety-six square feet, not sixty, forty percent of the wall. So we feel like that is a forty percent of the wall.
This is thirty.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
Your second? This part right there says thirty.
So this is more in line with what other communities are. Some of them may have three wall signs, or they may have three wall signs at a hundred square feet or two wall signs at one fifty. We just, this, we felt like this was a greater option for different businesses that are coming in. Still shows us as a friendly county, we're, you know, conducive to growth and commercial side. We didn't have any other complaints or anything about any other parts of the sign or it's just a wall sign. That's all we're recommending to this board, that we'll be allowed to change that in our ordinance.
All right, any questions? All right, we have a motion.
Thank you.
We might have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, keep, try to skip that part, Tony. I don't want to talk so much.
So we, we have...
That's a problem with those lawyers.
Yeah, that's right. So we have for consideration the attached amendment that described our staff. So we'll open this up for a public hearing for comment on, for any of the people in the audience, for or against. Anyone like to speak for or against or just generally comment? No takers, so with that, we'll close the public hearing, and this is ready for action, Mr. Chairman.
Now, does anybody have a motion to approve or disapprove?
So moved.
To approve.
Approved.
They have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wood?
Second, all in favor?
All right, thank you. To the consent agenda, long winded night. Seven point one, motion to approve a Microsoft license agreement with Tiff County's local area network for a cost of forty-six thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents. Motion to approve a grant award for the adult felony drug court in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and approve a request for date funds of twenty-five thousand dollars. Seven point three, motion to approve the grant award for the Tiff County DUI drug court in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and to approve a request for date funds of twenty-five thousand dollars. Seven point four, motion to approve a three-year maintenance and service program agreement with ProCare for EMS equipment for a cost of twenty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-three cent annually. Seven point five, motion to issue a notice of award of southern concrete construction for the Mitchell Store Road Bridge replacement project over Arnold Creek for a cost of one million, four hundred thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-three cent to be paid from TIA funds and authorize the chairman to execute the construction agreement. Seven point six, motion to ratify the emergency purchase and installation of air conditioning unit in the juvenile justice building for a cost of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh seven surplus vehicles and equipment. Seven point eight, motion to authorize county clerk to submit an application for the Georgia EPD scrap tire amnesty grant. Seven point nine, motion to approve agreement of quality tire recycling for a tire amnesty event. Seven point ten, motion to approve a lease renewal with the State Properties Commission for property located in the rear of the Charles Ken administration building, occupied by the Department of Juvenile Justice. Seven point one, motion to approve the lease renewal with the State Properties Commission for property located at two twenty-five Tiff Avenue North, Building C, Suite Two, occupied by the Department of Georgia Public Defenders. Seven point twelve, motion to approve the lease renewal with the State Properties Commission for property located at thirty-six seven Highway Forty-one South, occupied by Department Driver Services. Seven point thirteen, motion to approve the thirty-six month lease renewal with the United States Department of Agriculture for a property located at fourteen sixty-eight Carpenter Road. Seven point fourteen, motion to approve the renewal of the county's property and liability insurance coverage with a five thousand for occurrence deductible with ACCG for the July one twenty twenty-three to July one twenty twenty-four planned year. Any items the commissioner would like removed to be considered individual? Hearing none, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out on item seven point seven, the surplus vehicles, there was one change made to that resolution since the workshop. The two thousand and two Dodge Dakota, the airport authority does not, does not need that vehicle. So it would be submitted to GovDeals instead of giving to the airport authority.
Change, motion? All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a second. Commissioner Wood, a second, all in favor? All right. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. Eight point one, amendment to the county's personnel policy regarding holidays. We discussed this at length Tuesday night. I think everyone pretty well clearly stated their positions. We're considering either remove Christmas Eve holiday and add Veterans Day or just simply add Veterans Day or to leave as is. Does anybody have anything new to add to the discussion? Okay, we have a motion on one of these three choices.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to leave the personnel policy as is.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, and all against? All right, so if the motion failed, then we have another motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. That was Stonaker and Hughes made the second, who voted in favor. That would go in faster.
Hughes, Stonaker, and Heskey.
Thank you.
So now would that, could have a motion on remove Christmas Eve and add Veterans Day or just add Veterans Day?
I would like to make a motion that we remove Christmas Eve and add Veterans Day.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor? And against? So, all in favor?
All right, so you did not, did you vote the last time, Mr. Chairman, to break that tie?
Yes.
So, I'm confused. Give the staff just one second.
Commissioner, we're going to take a second motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, a second.
So that does, that carries by, so, one, two, three.
Now we have the addendum to the contract with Watkins and Associates LLC for the Pocket Park Improvement Project. That's added to the regular agenda.
So wait, four, three?
So...
You take it off?
So, so remove the Christmas Eve and add Veterans Day. So we're moving December the twenty-fourth from the, uh, from the holiday schedule and adding November the eleventh.
So, this year, they won't get...
It'll start immediately.
So what was already planned for this year of the last budget, it will end for, am I right now? From, for them, the employees to get their holiday, Christmas, Christmas Eve? Are we just cutting it or turning, can you straighten me out with that? Because what, when I'm, I'm looking at, they have planned it for this holiday. Now, the board, the majority, majority win. The board took it away.
That's fair, that's accurate, that's... So I understand the motion, it becomes effective as the commissioner said immediately. Of course, it predates, from the budget standpoint, which is, the budget's not an issue now. It's just that whether or not in this calendar year...
The calendar year. So we took it from them, from the, the calendar year and giving them something else you just put in six weeks ahead of time.
Right, eleven, eleven to twelve, twenty-four, yes.
I just say six weeks, but this is...
Top six, which is about right.
Who knows?
So, I got it. So that was just Jason, which I thought I remembered the talk. But Christmas Eve is on a Saturday, or is Christmas on Saturday this year?
Twenty-fourth is on Saturday.
Twenty-fifth is on Sunday. So normally, commissioner, they would have that on Friday.
But you still get the day. If Christmas was on Saturday, they get Friday.
Right, that's right.
Right. You won't get the day, but now we taking away, you not getting...
We'll work, we'll work Friday, county gives for business Friday.
Right.
But we will be closing business on eleven, eleven.
Is it any kind of way that... Because I feel like we not doing the right thing for our employee by taking stuff. We just snatching that away from them within that calendar year. Right?
You got six months in advance of the plan.
No, no, we, we, we took it out. We just took it out. We just took it out today. And gave, and put another day in there within six months, six weeks.
No.
Yes.
Veterans Day is in the program.
We're doing a good, I, I said six weeks, I, I give you four months, Dan. You're taking, you're just removing what people have planned it and they would end with their calendar year. Am I right?
That, that is the effect of the decision, yes.
Me, a person, put it down in the record. I'm not saying I don't feel like it right. I'm gonna put it like this, because what's in me coming out, I know it's not right. But hopefully, you, you know, I'm a deal with you.
All right, Jason.
Good evening, commissioners. This is for the contract for engineering services for Watkins and Associates, Tiff County Board of Commissioners for the Pocket Park Basketball Court improvements. How far detail you want to go through this contract on the...
So, so Mr. Chairman, you know, normally, when we have an adjustment to the contract depending on when our pricing comes in, and as you know, Pocket Park just came in, we normally see an addendum to the agenda, adding the contract, I mean, engineering services or amendment to that, the engineering contract. And of course, that will be followed up immediately with item, this will be, become eight point three, which is a notice of award of construction contract for the Pocket Park Improvement Project. So it's okay, my Jake is up here, and we can vote on it, it's four point one and four point two. So the, the contract for the engineering is, engineering costs as far as adjustment to the contract, add engineering costs of thirty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars, sixty-two cent. And the very next item on the agenda is a notice of award. Bidding is open on June fifth. I was on a one bidder standard contract with a base bid of three hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cent. The only response that bid that we had...
Standard contractors.
I mean, they're good contractors.
They don't like bidding.
But they're the only one that bid. Have they done anything for us here before, Jason?
No, sir, they have not. They do a lot of work at Moody Air Force Base, and they've done a, a, a pile of work for the city of Austin, Atlanta County.
If you're familiar with the, the skate park and the softball complex and now soccer complex, that, as you're coming out of, really, hey, hire.
Yeah.
That's there on that side of the road, standard contractor, with the contractor on, on that.
And the, and the reason we didn't get many bidders was because it's such a small project and support basketball court. Where people, compared to, they know that.
And quite honestly, right now, contractors are a lot struggling to work. There's a lot of money on there, and, you know, the mid to big size contractors, large contractors, or, they're loaded. And quite honestly, right now, uh, contractors are not starting to work. There's a lot of money on there and, you know, the, the mid to big size contractors, large contractors are, are loaded. And, uh, so even on bigger jobs, we're having fewer and fewer folks bid on them because, you know, they've got so much work that, uh, they're, they're kind of opening off. Uh, I, I, I know that, I think, as you were telling me, that others open bids and they have one response of bidding, was that for road projects or, or, or what was it? He's picked it up. So, had a road project off account, one bid. Uh, so I mean, I think we're gonna see more and more of that until some of this federal state money, uh, dries up a little bit, so.
So thirty-one thousand addendum is because the product came in higher than?
No, no, sir, so it, 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 the way that this agreement is written, Miriam and I talked about it today, and, uh, I'm gonna sit down with Tony and, and Stacy tomorrow. We have engineering costs, roughly, uh, between, they run anywhere between seven and ten percent dependent on the project, scope of the project, that kind of stuff. The way that this agreement's written, but every time we have a, a project, we actually have to have an addendum to that agreement to add engineering cost in. I, I don't think that makes a whole lot of sense. Every project we got, whether it's engineered by our, by a local engineer or by somebody else, we have engineering cost. Those are part of the project. Can't have a project without engineering cost, so, uh, Miriam and I just had a discussion that having three different add-ons for one part is cumbersome and confusing for somebody who's just, you know, who haven't looked at it ten times. So, I mean, really, the engineering cost is part of the project cost, just like it was. But if you'll remember, when we did, um, EB Hamlet, we had an addendum to contract to do that, and we did the City Beach project, we had an addendum to contract to do that. And, uh, but you're on the airport authority, when y'all have that, you don't have an addendum to add engineering cost, so those are part of the project cost. So, as confusing as it sounded, I probably didn't make it any less confusing. So we need to have the engineering cost and the project cost both approved, and you look at project costs, it includes both those amounts at.
So it'd basically be three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for, for the total project, including engineering services?
Right, and we need to, we need to reflect that, add that moving forward, uh, if that's okay with the board and we can get that cleared up.
Sounds good.
I told Miriam today I didn't like it. She's totally tough, so I'll, uh, work on that a little bit, but, uh, it, it, I do think it's confusing, so. Any more questions that I can confuse y'all about?
And y'all know the scope of work that's going on at Bucket Park? This will be removing the existing basketball court angles, coming back in, raising elevation, pouring a concrete basketball, having a, um, professional court, striper painter coming in, painting it two different colors, um, and new basketball goals put up with fencing around the, uh, the basketball court.
And that includes, um, as it was explained, I call it poly. I mean, I'm sure there's a certain kind of, uh,
The paint.
Not just the paint, but the whole coat, the whole court's gonna be covered in a.
It's not a polyurethane, it's a, um,
Epoxy.
Epoxy.
So that court's gonna be like you would see on a, I mean, it's what we're putting on, what everybody, it's the same thing that you put on a, on a new tennis court or on you. You know, it's that same kind of court, so it adds to the durability and, uh, this is guaranteed to have, you know, do away with bird bass, none of that. So, I mean, you see this, it's gonna be the nicest outdoor court that I know of anywhere around. Uh, it's gonna be really, it's not, you can make it outside without moving it inside. And that's the, the intent. And we're gonna come back in the next, should, maybe by next meeting, with the additions to the playground equipment, uh, which would include, uh, a safe play mat in the bottom, so, so we have demo, uh, the current swing set, if y'all remember, the playground set that's there, we put in since, since I've been here, I think, if you want the board, we can put that new playground equipment down there, Commissioner. So, you know, it's been, it's been about.
Two thousand eight or nine, I think it was.
Uh, but it's still in really good shape. What we want to do is leave, leave the newer equipment there, take the old swings down, uh, and it puts some new swings up. I, I think the swings do get used, uh, but as we add those in, we wanna take, uh, safety into consideration and add some, uh, a little bit of, uh, cushion under, under equipment and, uh, and, you know, and continue to talk about other changes we can make to, to that facility. This is a board in place rubber service that makes you compliant with playgrounds.
All right, any other questions? All right, we didn't take a motion on the addendum to the contract with Watkins and Associates LLC for Bucket Park Improvement Project, we have that first.
Some move.
Yes. My first.
Second.
Commissioner Hester's second. All in favor? All right, and then the notice of award of construction contract for the Bucket Park Improvement Project, we have a motion for that.
Uh-huh.
Sir.
Okay, Commissioner Hester's second again. All in favor? All right. All right, we'll sit in that. All right.
Mr. Carter, you have any comments?
Uh, this, you mentioned Mr. Walker's family and, uh, and, um, and Munro's, um, and his family, uh, so they, they've had losses, so some of our staff's been out with that, Christian. All that's okay from that perspective. Uh, if you keep them in the prayer, would also like to, um, to, to let the board know that our eight U, and if I can find my, my notes here, eight U and ten U boys' baseball team went to the regional, actually, we had three teams go to the regional, the regional tournaments. Uh, eight U, ten U and twelve U. And, uh, the twelve U team, although played very, very well, they did not make it out of the regional tournament, but the eight U and the ten U teams advanced to the, to the state semifinals and they'll be playing in the state semifinals this week, or?
The twentieth and the twenty-first.
In Bainbridge?
Mm-hmm.
In Bainbridge. So our eight U and ten U boys will be playing in the, you know, if they get by the semifinals, then they'll be, uh, playing for state championship.
One of the Brunswick Lions in Gainesville.
Yeah, I thought we talked about Bainbridge.
So, uh, I don't, uh, I don't put me on the record in a pathway of playing, we know that are gonna play. All right, Mr. Chairman, and that, that's all I have.
Mr. Ryan, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hester?
Uh, yes. I think we made, it's over. It's still bothering me if it's over. When we made the decision whether we were gonna go on the holiday, we didn't, I guess then we made a motion to add Veteran Day. Add another holiday. We didn't make, we didn't, uh, 'cause it was number two, I think that's how that, did that sort of go like that, uh?
Well, we, in the work session, we identified the three options. So, you know, I think the process was that the board would be able to through the motion process to choose the option that it was, that it's all to, to choose to change the policy. Uh, had to defer to clerk, but I think that the motion was properly made to, to support the decision.
Yes, I'm like, Commissioner Hester. I'm not disappointed that we have Veterans Day, but I'm disappointed because I think our clerk and Mr. Davis gave us an option where we could still celebrate our heroes and continue to have Christmas Eve. I love the idea, what Ms. Miriam and Mr. Davis found, where we can put veterans out, uh, picture out front and celebrate them. Plus, still have what the employees wanted. We said that we didn't take anything from them, but we did. Plus, I don't know any, I know two commissioners that asked the employees what they wanted. So we didn't ask them, we took it from them and we gave them what the majority wanted to give. I still hope we can celebrate our veterans by having their pictures out front, Ms. Miriam. But I just wanna let the employees know it was a hard fight. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I will come in to say that I think the board made a very responsible decision and not about the holidays. We don't just make all decisions for the, for our employees we have, we also had to weigh the balance with the forty-one thousand citizens that we represent. And I think the banner for Veterans Day is a great idea, but it doesn't give it the honor and respect that it's deserved just by putting banners and not giving, doesn't make the holiday for. Holidays are intentionally meant to celebrate a specific event or, 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 you know, or, or a group of events and, and certainly Veterans Day deserves that, that honor and that respect that holidays. All right, is there anything else? You don't contain a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.